Hour of 7:30 has arrived. I'd like to call to order this business meeting of District 116 for November 21st, 2017. Roll call, please.
Member Carter.
Here.
Member Hall.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Veloski.
Here.
Member Fisher is here. Vice President Rollins Gay.
Here.
And President Demmett.
Here. Quorum is present. Any additions, corrections, or modifications?
No.
To this evening's agenda? None. Citizen statements. We have one on file, but if anyone else wishes to address the board tonight, please fill out a Goldenrod sheet and turn it in to our recording secretary. And Terry, if you want to get up there and get ready while I see if anyone else wishes to speak to the board tonight, seeing none, we'll get started. But I do first want to recognize Jason for running the camera for us tonight.
Thank you, Jason.
So the folks at home can watch us.
Thank you, Jason.
Anyone that's left in town. So Terry Townsend. Terry?
Good evening, Chair. I'm sure I'm on here. Am I on?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Ah. Good evening, Chair, Board, Superintendent, Staff, Substitute Teachers that are here and the ones that are listening. I'm here to request a pay increase and a new salary program for substitute teachers. 116 Declaration is clear. Substitute teachers are considered teaching staff, yet they are the only employee subgroup of this district that has not received a pay increase in nearly three years. Operationally, substitute teachers are required to give up their prep and hall duty supervision for instructional time. This is not in every building, but this is understandable and is certainly acceptable. The administrators must have people that fill in when there's IEPs, when there are all kinds of things. So no one would take any, take an issue with that. But other school districts pay substitute teachers for this, what they call teacher overload. This district does not. These are only a few of the issues that surround pay for substitute teachers. As you are fully aware, substitute teachers are not in the union. As student behavior issues increase and as the economy continues to improve, the teacher shortage will worsen. That we are aware of, and so shall the substitute teacher shortage. I have four recommendations at this stage. Recommendation one, that you amend the budget and give substitute teachers a 3% increase. Recommendation two, pay substitute teachers for teacher overload the same as other districts are doing. Recommendation three, when other employees get a pay increase, substitute teachers should also get a pay increase. This was probably, would be annually. Recommendation four, pay for substitute teachers must be consistent with the spirit of the Equal Pay Act, and the issue should be reviewed by state officials. With your support, I think that this should be considered a preliminary statement. I'm not going to talk about the administrative issues that surround subs, but you know if subs are not in the building, it creates an awful challenge to each one of the buildings. Subs should stay in their lane. They should not try to be teachers or administrators or interfere with the operational dictates of any building. But we must approach this system-wide issue differently than what we have been doing. And I know that Champagne and Rantoux are probably listening in. We have a system that if Champagne raises the pay $5, then we raise it $5. I think we need to revisit this and do it differently. This is good for the subs, it's good for the building, and it's good for the kids. And hopefully, this statement will be well received by you, and we will develop this jointly. Let us begin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have no call for exec session tonight. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move in second.
Moved in second at all? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion is carried. We have no commendations or recognitions this evening, but we do have some administrative reports, so we'll begin with the proposed tax levy.
Thanks, Tom. At your place tonight, I provided a couple of new things that wasn't in the board packets on Friday. One of the items was a correction for the tax levy, the total, on the proposed tax levy was off about $200,000. So it's actually 42-801 before debt service. Just an adding error on that, so I wanted to correct that. So you do have a, the black box that's going to be in the paper, so that has the correct totals on it. As you know, because we are tax capped and because a couple of years ago, we were almost caught with not having levied enough when Carl almost came back on the tax rolls, and the hospitals in general almost came back on the tax rules, we decided at that point that it made no sense not to do a balloon levy and request more than we know we're going to actually get. There's no penalty for doing this, but there's no way we're going to actually get more than we legally can receive due to tax caps. So we can ask for 30, 40, 50% more than what we got last year, and in the end, the county clerk is not going to allow us to get more than CPI. Tax cap law will not allow us to get more than CPI, plus any new construction that may come on. So tonight, we are proposing about a 20, 29% increase in the levy. And again, as we stated, we will not get that. And if for some reason, the hospital decision would be made before, in time for the December levy, we can always correct that in February, by the end of February, by abating our debt service to impact our tax rate. So nothing about this is final, not until the December 31st rolls, and we know what the actual, the actual EAV will be at that point. Any board review decisions will be decided next spring, so it won't be actually until April, probably, that we will know the final EAV figures and the impact on our tax rate. So I will have that information at that time. But tonight, basically, we're just asking for the board to approve the proposed levy, to be able to publish our black box in the paper, and then we will come back in December at the business meeting and request final approval, have our public hearing, and then have final approval of the tax levy. Do you have be able to file that by the last Tuesday in December? CPI, as I said, was 2.1% this year, which is, is quite a bit higher than we've had in the past. I mean, it was .7% last year, so that's good, good news. The last time we had anything above 2% was in 2012. It was 3%. So this is the highest CPI we've had in the last four or five years, so that's good. Other than that, I think unless there's any questions from the board, this is standard procedure going forward, and unless you tell me differently, I'm going to move ahead and balloon levy, and we can come back when we have actual tax rate figures in the spring. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have a question. You always provide really good background information, Carol, but on the memo that you sent to us with our board packet, under the 2017 levy, the statement that says, "In addition, under tax caps, we are allowed access to the full growth from any new construction. New construction can be captured in full only once, and if not, that revenue is lost forever." You've probably explained that to me before, but explain that again. New construction can be captured in full only once.
The first year that properties come on the tax rolls and the hospitals were, when they come back on the tax rules, they're actually considering construction.
They would be, okay.
Yes. They were the first time when they were talking about it. So we're assuming that's going to be the case.
Okay.
Again, if it, if it does happen. So that is why, in order to capture that new construction, that's why we have to levy so much.
Okay.
Right, this year, right now, we're estimating new construction to be only about 9 million.
Uh-huh.
But if the hospitals come back on, it could be 245 million, I mean 145 million. So that's a huge increase.
So when you say captured only once, you mean we get to tax them?
You get it that first year it comes on. After that, it's just part of your base EAV. So if you don't levy enough to capture all that new construction, the first year it comes on, it's not going to be in your base, and it's never, you're never going to have it going forward. So that's why it's important that we don't lose that access. I wanted to point out, too, there was, I did provide at your place another color chart that kind of shows you a history of what we levy for and what's in that black box every year versus what we actually get. You can see last year, we levied 28.6%. Our actual increase was only 3.25. So that just shows you that even though we're levying close to 30%, because of tax caps, there is, it doesn't allow you to get near that much. So we basically get our CPI plus whatever new construction comes on. And I did check with the Park District and the MTD, and they were also levying at 30, they were both at 30%. So it's, it's a, it's a safety net that we're all taking advantage of because we know that it's not a final. We all, we all have the ability to come back and adjust it in February if the hospitals happen to come on as new construction, which we've been waiting a long time for that, and it hasn't happened yet. So any other questions?
And I'll save my work on how to calculate how much the hospital is already in effect in there and how much isn't for February, when it becomes a reality and we've got real numbers that we can work with.
We've talked, I've talked to the county clerk's office about that, and they know that that's what we want to do, but they're not, it's a lot of work on their part to figure that out. And they said until that happens, they're not going to do that. So when the time comes, yeah, we're going to need to get that information.
Okay, any other questions for Carol tonight? All right. Is that it, Carol?
Yeah, thank you.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Our next administrative report is the 2017 Illinois School Report Card.
So Dr. Bryndham is going to give just a real quick overview of the report card. Some of you saw the press release that came out about a week or so ago about the new report card that's up. Board Member Patton asked a couple of questions, and so I asked Dr. Bryndham to just give a quick overview of that data.
(inaudible)
Oh, man.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. There we go. Let's see. Did I do something wrong?
From the student attendance tab, you can see the-
So I am going to try this again.
You are now paired. Powering on. Welcome to Altech Lansing.
All right. So what I want-
In and out of the school between the first day of Oc-
There we go. All right, so we are set. We have sound. One of the first things that I wanted to do is just provide a, an overview of some of the new things that the school report card entails. It has a very interactive dashboard that gives us a lot more insights to how it is that we can look at both student academic performance, we can look at different assessment measures, we can look at how, anything from student attendance, staff, staff evaluations, attendance, a variety of different aspects. So some of the big changes, in 2017, the Illinois School Report Card includes new metrics on the SAT, and that came out recently for the first time. It's in the academic portion of the school report card as well. Plus it, there's different ways in which it interacts with professional evaluations, plus demographic data, dropout rates. Also, student mobility rates have been recalculated to show the percentage of students who experience at least one transfer in or out of school instead of the total number of moves. SAT results for 11th grade students are displayed for the first time under the Academic Progress. For performance levels help with, help us with understanding of new numbers, partially meeting, approaching, meeting, and exceeding standards. High school profiles now display the number of students working on early college coursework. Student enrollment information for these courses is broken down by demographics. The Advanced Placement, or AP, display includes the number of students earning college credits. Currently, the data for AP is available for grades 10, 11, and 12. Ninth grade data will be posted when it's available. Additionally, the number of students enrolled at at least one career technical education course is also displayed. ISB has been working to improve greater access to data about special education programs, so this is now included in the school report card. They have advanced the, enhanced the report card to include information about educational environment, disability category, and demographics. And one of the really interesting features about the school report card is its ability to do kind of a shopping list where you can compare multiple schools against different categories. You can compare up to eight schools in three categories, fast facts, academic progress, school environment. The information included in the comparison goes beyond just test scores and show schools' highlights submitted by principals, college readiness, benchmarks, student characteristics, and district finances. So it has a variety of components that we can go through and look and mix, match, and compare to other district as well. One of the more, more new interfaces is that it has a usage for, or capabilities for, for phones and tablet users. So when it is that you're out and maybe you see something, you want to take a look at it, you have an interface that is basically for any type of mobile devices, which has a more seamless interface than what it was previously with just the desktop. Easy to read tiles and summary, summarizes data. And so you can click on these interactive tools just to get a better understanding. So some of the things that are important to acknowledge is that this information is only a snapshot, and we don't wait for the school report card to come out before it is. We start making improvement plans. We continuously get feedback and think about how it is that we can really be strategic about how it is that we implement instructional plans for the development and learning of students. Some of the things that we're focusing on is increasing specialized inclusive practices across subjects for students with IEPs, students receiving literacy intervention, and students receiving EL and bilingual services. We have a TAOP grant, which is really focusing on attendance, chronic truancy, and potential dropouts, increasing engagement, innovative learning opportunities, student spending class in higher order learning, and student academic achievement for all students, especially students of color, and create a balanced budget and business practices that clearly reflect our shared beliefs, values, as well as support our district vision. And so these are just some of the focus areas. Continue to focus on student and learning. Student learning and engagement emphasize, emphasis on formative assessment and feedback and data assessment. So what I want to do is actually take us to the data portal. So I can, I'm going to provide an actual walkthrough of how to utilize the database. And so you can go in, how many of you have used the Illinois School Report Card before?
I have.
Okay, so fairly familiar with it. So I can go in, I can identify what school it is that I want, and I just skip that step because I go to, go here, and I can click on the, the actual district here, and it will bring me to this webpage where I can see, I can pull the snapshot. And this is what you have in, in front of you, passed out. Gives you an overall overview of a variety, of a variety of different academic components, but also talks a little bit about district finance, as well as on the back readiness, and then where there's some gaps in achievement, attendance rate, attendance rates as well, and a few educator measures. So in doing that, I'm going to show a quick video.
Report Card Video Guide: A Deeper Understanding of Your Students. This video will explain how to explore the different facets that describe the student population in your school or district. This information includes enrollment numbers, racial and ethnic diversity, percentages of low-income students, and a host of other related metrics. Start off by searching for your school on the Illinois Report Card homepage. For this video, I will use Byron High School. Note that there are slight variations depending on whether you select a school or district profile. This will take you to the school or district snapshot. We talk more about the snapshot in the Finding Your School Information on Illinois Report Card video. Click Students. It's the tab right under School Environment on the left-hand side of the screen. You'll see a dropdown box appear with a set of nine metrics, which are also illustrated in preview tiles in the middle of the screen. Clicking each tile gives you a more in-depth look at each metric. So let's start with the Enrollment tab. This will open a graph that displays the total number of students enrolled in your school or district by year. Notice you can also click View by Grade to see the information displayed by grade level. Next, click the Racial and Ethnic Diversity tab underneath Enrollment. This displays a pie chart with the percentages of students belonging to different racial and ethnic groups. You can also select Show Five-Year Trend to see the data on demographic groups broken out over time, as well as how the percentages compare to the district and state. And these are color-coded. Yellow is school, green is district, and teal is state, and that's with every metric across the site. Click the Low-Income Students tab to see a pie chart with the percentages of students eligible to receive free or reduced-priced lunches, living in substitute care, or whose families are receiving public aid. As with racial and ethnic diversity, you can also click Show Five-Year Trend to see the data over five years. Click the Students with Disabilities tab to see a pie chart with the percentages of students who receive special education services. You can also click Five-Year Trend to see this data over five years. Click the Homeless tab to see a graph with the percentages of students who do not have permanent or adequate homes. You can check or uncheck district comparison or state comparison to see where your school falls compared with larger averages. The English Learner tab presents a pie chart showing percentages of students whose primary language is not English. You can view a five-year trend for this metric as well. From the Student Attendance tab, you can see the average daily attendance for the school you selected, as well as how the data compares with district and state average attendance. Click the Student Mobility tab to see mobility information. Student Mobility shows the percentage of students who transfer in and out of the school between the first day of October and the last school day of the year. This metric does not count graduates. You can check or uncheck district and state comparison to see where your school falls compared with larger averages. The Chronically Truant Students tab shows you the percentage of students who miss 5% of school days per year without a valid excuse. You can view a five-year trend for this metric as well. Notice there are three tabs below all of the displays.
And so that's just to give you a basic overview. So what I'll do is just give you some insights. That way, we can see kind of, kind of just like the dashboard of different things that we can look at, whether that's park scores or participation rates for SAT achievement gap. And so as you click on these different things, it'll give you more in-depth information. You can see different trend lines as well. One of the other really interesting things is you can look at teachers, click on different demographic information. It'll give you a breakdown, retention, salary, a variety of different aspects in terms of evaluating just kind of what the statistics are for the district. It just gives a pulse of where things are at each year. All right. Are there any particular questions that I could answer, questions that you might have? Yes?
I just wanted to know, on the tab, that you go to the homeless, homeless section, the number of students who we classify as homeless, where do they get their, that data from? Is it the Regional Office of Education, what we report?
We report that information out to the state each year, and that's part of our district data outputs that we report. And so after we report that information each year, it, it goes into the actual school report card.
Okay. Thank you.
Peggy?
And I was, I know there was at least a couple of reports that I heard in the news when this first came out, kind of cautioning people to, about the difficulty in making comparisons from last year to this year. And I think it had to do with the, the park test and the way they were being presented, as well, as well as the college readiness test, ACT and SAT. But I, to be honest, I didn't kind of follow what, what some of the challenges were in, in making comparisons from last year to this.
Because the, the test has changed multiple times in terms of either the, the series or variation, it's difficult to make comparisons because they're not comparing the same material from the previous year to what exists now. And in many ways, it would be like comparing scores to, from an ACT to a SAT, which there isn't a really good basis for that. And so that, that's why there was some caution about how it is that we interpret those scores. And so what I would say is this, this is very much some of the information that we use on a continual basis, though, to inform how it is that we might think about instructional strategies and what informs in many ways, school improvement plans or district goals as well.
Okay. And the other question is, I, I thought one of the versions of the old report card included information about expulsions and suspension rates. I mean, am I, I mean, this may be several versions of the Illinois Report Card at GOL, but there's nothing like that today that I could find.
No.
There's a lot of things about student environment, but nothing related to discipline records.
Yeah. I think that's one of the things that is definitely not in this report. We might look at attendance, dropout rates, health and wellness, and even looking at students, we might see what chronic truant looks like
Yeah.
for the school. Before, it's actual discipline data. In, in this sequence or series, that's not something that
Yeah.
is displayed.
There's been quite a bit of discussion at the state level about discipline data, and they are pulling our discipline data.
Uh-huh.
And so we expect that at some point, they might do that. But the, the challenge there is when districts have very different definitions for things like in-school suspensions and
Oh, is it right?
out-of-school, well, maybe not out-of-school suspensions, but until there's some consistency in coding, I think that the State Board of Education has been reluctant to start putting up that kind of data.
Gotcha.
Although I think that you can't stress enough the issue of the changes in the test scores, and they don't have a problem putting that data up.
Yeah.
When, for example, the college readiness is based a great deal on the ACT prior to last year, but then last year, starting with the SAT. So that, there are still concerns and problems, but as Dr. Bryndham said, this is a very good kind of dashboard that we start to look at with our principals and our school improvement teams as we're making our goals.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes.
So I know besides the, the park test and the SAT or ACT, we also have our own internal assessments for, for student progress. You're going over the historical data for that. Does that correlate with the historical data we're getting from the existing data we report to the state?
Um, there, other, other assessments that we use, whether that's been our BASS system, AIM, or ODMS, there isn't a strong way to correlate those, like there isn't a crosswalk for them. But what I would say is that we use these different data points in combination to really think about our instructional strategies and how it is that we would either coach principals or teachers in terms of classroom engagement. And so it, it's really just taking each piece of information, add something different, and creates a, what I would, what I would consider a more broad perspective of different areas that we would be able to engage. So each one adds something different. So to really think about our instructional strategies and how it is that, um, we would either coach principals or teachers in terms of classroom engagement. And so, it, it's really just taking each piece of information, add something different, and creates a, a, what I would con- what I would consider a more, uh, broad, um, perspective of different areas that we would be able to engage. So each one adds something different. Uh, so when we look at Park as a, you know, um, type, type-one assessment or standardized normed assessment, uh, e- within our schools, we have, uh, type-two assessments where great-level leaders or department chairs have come together and discussed what are some of the different ways that the students can be assessed. So, and then we have formative assessments as well. So we take all of those different, uh, data points into consideration on how it is that we're able to monitor student growth. And that's why I think one of the interesting things about this new dashboard is it takes some of that feedback from principals that they can talk about or highlight, uh, some of the things that are going on in their school, to add some more of that, uh, qualitative data that is often missing from what we, what we see on this end. A lot of it is, uh, quantitative. So.
Reflecting on Paul's question, Noah, is there a is there some consistency in the overall impression that you would get about a school, uh, and the students between this test and the other data points? Um, in terms of, and I, and I, what it comes down to is, is this, a, a relatively accurate reflection of the school performance, or is this an aberration?
Now, I, I would be hesitant to say that it's, it's not, uh, that it doesn't have any validity at all. But what I, but I, I would want to caution to say that it, it is one data point. And not to say that this isn't a, uh, a particular measurement of where students might be at on this particular assessment, that has to be taken into consideration with other assessments and other data points. So this in and of itself, I would say, no, it's not an accurate reflection of, uh, a comprehensive look at where, how students are performing. Uh, I would say that that would need to be taken into consideration, uh, with, uh, grades, GPA, GPA and things like that as well, to provide a more holistic, uh, picture of their academic outcomes. And, you know, that's something that's not in the, in the dashboard, uh, in terms of how it is that, that looks across the district. But that, I think that would be something that's important to include, that way we have a, a variety of different metrics to look at to assess, or better assess, an actual snapshot of the district or where students are performing. Overall.
I, I ask the question because, um, what, just a month ago, we were at Academic Monogram Night at the high school. And, um, I really felt that the students that were receiving the academic monograms, um, were very diverse. Uh, and yet, when you look at the, uh, success by student group part of the dashboard, you would not think that would be the case in our school. And yet, I'm, I would, I would have to differ. I would, just being in the school and watching and seeing who is achieving well and, and, uh, um, if you, if you take a look at the racial makeup of the top 25% of the class, for instance, of each of the classes, um, it would certainly not be reflective of these, of this graph by student group, uh, in my mind, and so, um, it's just an observation. I don't know if it means anything or not, but it's just an observation.
And I would completely agree with that. And so, in looking at this, and this is why I say it's just a snapshot of one particular aspect, and looking at that, uh, student success by student group in particular is only focusing on Park, which is only one measure. And that's why when, uh, Paul had asked, what are the other, uh, assessments that you use? And I would say we use at least six or seven different assessments, along with, uh, a variety of common assessments, in addition to, uh, teacher formative assessments, which aren't reflected in our, our school report card. So this is just a snapshot, and, and again, this is based on, um, a test that has continued to change over multiple years, that doesn't provide us a real basis for assessing how it is that we're able to improve from one year to the next.
I would say that the, the data on the school report card does contain a lot of interesting contradictions. Um, for example, one of the things that, uh, Dr. Bynum talked about just briefly was the, uh, Advanced Placement Tests and the Advanced Placement Scores. And if you take a look at that, that speaks a little bit to what, uh, you were saying, uh, Mr. Dimmitt, about the fact that, um, our students in our Advanced Placement classes over the last two years are becoming more representative. They're not quite there yet, but they're more representative of our student body. That is, there are more students of color in our Advanced Placement classes. You also take a look at the scores on the Advanced Placement Tests, which earn people college credit. And those scores are well above the state and national averages. Um, we have more students who are in the AP classes who take the tests who receive college credit than any other school in the county. So you could take that data, right? And you compare it to this Park data. And that's a, that's a huge, um, contradiction in what I would consider student outcomes. Now, that doesn't mean, we don't have data on every single student on an AP test because there, not every single student is in an AP class, but we have a lot of AP classes. We have a lot of students that take multiple AP classes. Um, and so that, that contradiction exists there, and I think that that's one of the things, um, that Dr. Bynum is, is really getting at there, is this is, this is one, um, one snapshot, and the Park, uh, we've, we've said this before. The Park is a single test from a single day. And I would never want any of us to use that test to define our students, our schools, our teachers, or overall, the success of our district. Um, I will just say one other thing, because I know that this is a conversation that, um, I've had with a couple board members individually, and that is the, uh, issue of something called GreatSchools.com, which has, um, a contract with Realtor.com and Zillow to provide school data. Well, Great Schools, and you can, you can read all about it on their, on their analysis of where they pull their data. They pull all of their data from the state report card from the single test. Now, they also do something where they take the Park data, and they create it into, um, basically a, a 10-point scale, which the Park was never really designed for that. And so they're taking data, applying a statistical analysis to it, and that it wasn't designed to do, and then reporting that out on, on Realtor.com and Zillow as this is how your schools do. That's a false narrative about public education in general, not just about Urbana. Um, and so that's something that I want everyone out there in our viewing audience, I want board members to be able to talk about. Um, I think that that's an important piece of that. And, um, we will continue to, uh, uh, work to tell our story of Urbana schools in ways, um, that reflect the talent of our students, the outcomes of our students, and the success of our students.
Okay, any other questions for?
I mean, on the backside of the, of the form you gave us, Samuel, I mean, the, um, percentage ready for next level by school, I mean, those, the percentages are so widely varying, and I can't make any rhyme or reason for why some would be 6% and some would be 35% ready for the next level. Is that solely based on Park data?
Yes.
To- so, wow. I mean, does it, I mean, really, it's, it's almost kind of nonsensical to me. I mean, you look at those percentages, and I, I would be hard-pressed to, you know, if, if someone were to call from the district and say, tell me why this school is 6% ready and this school's 35% ready.
Again, I think, I think that we, we are cautious when we talk about Park um, because it is, it is a single test. And it is a single test that, um, as Dr. Bynum has said, and we've said for several years, every, since it was released, since Park was released about five years ago, it has changed every single year. And, um, I will say that it, um, there are still some questions about, uh, how effective the Park is at providing us with data. Um, it's not lived up to the hype of giving us timely feedback. Um, it hasn't really, because it's not timely, it's hard for teachers and administrators to use it as a good benchmark, um, which is why we use our, our type-two or our local assessment data much more frequently to say, this is how we're going to measure progress.
No, I, I appreciate the discussion on, uh, the deficiencies at Park and, and how, how it's not really been able to provide you with longitudinal data to feed into a system of continuous improvement for the district, but I think it'd be, it would be interesting to have a, you know, a future study session where we talk about the, uh, assessments that we do use to feed back into our, our planning, um, and, and, and you present that story. And maybe, exactly, be curious to see what the longitudinal data is, uh, for those assessments as well.
I second that. Alright, any other questions for Dr. Bynum? Hearing none, I think, uh, thank you. Unless we have closing remarks, or that's it?
Thank you very much.
We're ready to move forward with, uh, we have no communications or policy review, but we do have a consent agenda this evening, and then some individual action items. On the consent agenda are the business, uh, the minutes of the business meeting of October the 17th, and the study session of November the 7th. We have October bills and checks with education fund bills in the amount of $737,000. Operations and maintenance fund bills in the amount of $133,000. Transportation fund bills in the amount of $415,000. Working cash bonds in the amount of $661,000. Uh, tort in the amount of, uh, $5,600. Life safety levy in the amount of $117,000, that's probably for work being done at Yankee Ridge. Uh, and payroll in the amount of $3.9 million. And adult education bond bills in the amount of $79,000. New winter fund loans tonight. Uh, we do have personnel items, and we have one in particular that we want to draw attention to.
Yeah, I wanted to point out, we have the retirement of Danny McCartney, our warehouse coordinator. He'll be retiring effective December 29th. And he is, as far as, far as my records show, that I've looked at thus far, he's served with us longer than any other employee we've had at 43 and a half years. So you'll be hearing his name again, but since he was right in front of you tonight, I wanted to make sure you'd, you'd note that.
And I knew Danny in school, and I know he was pushing a mop, uh, dust mop down the hallways prior to these 43 that you're talking about, because, well, he, okay. We girls love the janitor, let's put it that way. And so, we knew what grades we were in and what grade he was in, so on and so forth, and we liked to go watch Mr. McCartney dust the floors in the hall, so, there it is, it's out there.
Okay. I think it's more than 43. We're ready to move on. And, uh, also on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing directing the sale or disposal of, uh, some excess property that we have, which is a variety of library books. And also the establishment of a new activity account for a UHS jazz band. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call. I, I, sorry. Anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? I'm supposed to ask that, I'm sorry. Okay, hearing none, we're ready to vote. Uh, roll, roll, roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher says yes. Vice President Rollins Gay?
Yes.
And President Dimmitt?
Yes. Motion is carried. We also have some individual action items this evening, beginning with our gifts. Uh, Lucy Rich of Urbana donated a viola valued at $750 to the Band Department at the secondary level. And, uh, two, uh, families donated $100 each to the Urbana Middle School Band Department, Erin and Christie Gretsch, and Paul and Katrina Wefel. And Kuanis of Champaign-Urbana donated $800 to the Urbana Early Childhood to, uh, s- uh, school to purchase books that we sent home with the students. And, uh, finally, we had several, uh, that, uh, entities that donated to the, uh, Student Senate at the high school, uh, to assist with the Thanksgiving dinner. RW Painting, Hickory River, Society of St. Vincent de Paul, Champaign County Retired Teachers Association, and Urbana Rotary. And I hope everybody saw the picture, and it looks like there's a lot in the paper, and there's going to be a lot of volunteers, and I understand they're, they're, uh, they're ready. Are almost ready.
They're new serving.
They'll be ready by Thursday morning.
Yeah.
Um, motion to approve the gifts.
So moved.
Accept the gifts and send, thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We, uh, have the 2018-2019 School Calendar Revision Request, uh, that was, uh, discussed at the last meeting, which is moving up Staff Development Day by one week.
I move approval of the proposed calendar change.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Our 2017 Proposed Tax Levy. We had discussion about it.
Move approval of the proposed levy.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Rollins Gay and President Dimmitt.
Yes. Motion is carried. Uh, we have no, uh, yes, we do. We do have a call for a special meeting, which is on, uh, November the 29th at 7:00 PM for the purpose of student discipline. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, uh, first, I'd like to go over, uh, two Freedom of Information Act requests. The first, uh, from Tim Ditman, WDWS, uh, that was specifically asking for public records that pertain to the settlement agreement made on behalf of Eric Louise Harold, a former student at University High School and District 116. These should be the same records that were recently requested by Scott Reader. And then, American Watch Dogs Group, uh, put in a Freedom of Information Request for copies of all debt currently held by the school district in any form to include but not limited to lines of credit, financial institution bonds, credit card, all payment structures for that debt that reflect principal payment, interest payment, and timeframe of those obligations, all compensation provided the superintendent of the superintendent's employment contract, minutes of agenda where superintendent's contract was approved. I will say that that was, that second one was a very easy one to fulfill because we have all of that information on our website. And so, we're a fairly, uh, transparent district. It's nice when we get a Freedom of Information Request and we can point everything to our website. Um, for the superintendent's report, I'd like to start with, uh, two things that are, um, very sad, um, remembrances. The first is Mrs. Renee Renfro, who was a retired social worker and more recently a substitute teacher in the district. She passed away on November 8th, 2017. Uh, her services and celebration of life were just this past Saturday. She's served thousands of students and families as a social worker at King Elementary School, and is also an active member of the community both while she was employed and after her retirement. She'll be sorely missed by not just her Urbana School District family, but the entire community. Second is Mr. J.C. Caroline. A retired PE teacher. He was also an NFL Chicago Bear and former Illini football standout. Uh, he passed away on Friday, November 17th, 2017. Uh, Mr. Caroline was a PE teacher and coach, uh, at Urbana Middle School and Urbana High School. He was also inducted into the College Football Hall of Fame in 1980, and, uh, was recently written up in the News Gazette as a standout running back, um, for the University of Illinois, and, um, his name was put up there with some of the uh, all-time rushers, um, from the University of Illinois. So, our condolences go to, uh, family, friends, and the entire community for, uh, those two losses of our Urbana School District family. Next up, um, I have a technology update. Uh, as, uh, board members know, and employees and some family members know, in the past two weeks, Urbana School District 116 has been the target of two separate malware attacks. And these attacks have been very serious in terms of our ability to conduct our basic functions, like attendance, grading, and reporting data. They've also taken out our websites at both the district and building level. At this time, however, we are thankful, we do not have any evidence or reason to believe that any of our student or staff data was compromised or removed from our control. Both of these attacks have been verified as what is called ransomware, where it essentially locks down the information on our servers. Student and staff data security is very important to us. We will continue to prioritize that data security as we move forward. Just so the board knows, and I've expressed this to them- as we move forward. Um, just so the board knows, and I've expressed this to them, um, via email, we were actually in the process of taking steps this fall to move all of our, uh, major databases off-site and into a more secure environment. Um, unfortunately, we weren't far enough along in that process, but we have now expedited that process in a large part thanks to a couple of our, um, partner vendors who, uh, really stepped up for us, um, and our technology team, and many secretaries and clerical staff have been working, um, quite a bit to move all the Skyward systems to a cloud-based platform, um, which provide much more security, much more stability, as well as consistency and redundancy. Um, the Skyward Student Finance and Human Resources programs were turned on for internal use yesterday, so that means that we could start taking attendance again. Um, we could start entering grades. Uh, we are not turning it on for outside use. That means you have to be with inside the district to access anything in Skyward. Um, and we're not turning it on for outside access. That means family access will not be turned on. Teachers and staff members cannot log on to Skyward from outside of the district's network, um, until we are, um, a hundred percent confident that all of the safety features that we're putting in place are working as they are, uh, designed. And so we're being very cautious about this, because one of the reasons why we were hit multiple times was because the, uh, the system, or should I say the, uh, malware itself, uh, could probably detect that we were, we had weaknesses in our, um, in our firewalls and in our safety features. So, uh, we're, we're being very cautious about how we roll things out, and we're very, um, optimistic about the future, uh, stability and strength of our system. I'd also like to, uh, point out a couple staff presentations. Uh, first of all, Dr. Scott Woods from Urbana Middle School, the principal, uh, presented a paper entitled "Access to Middle School Grades Programming: Examine Relationships Between the Middle School Concept and Schools' Racial and Ethnic Demographics." He did that at the University Council for Educational Administration Conference on Saturday, November eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, in Denver, Colorado. Um, also, Mr. Matt Stark, Mr. Travis Corson, Ms. Erin Ludwig, and Mr. Eric Morrow, the, uh, high school administrative team, as well as Ms. Elaine Spungen from Conflict One Eighty, who's one of our Restorative Practices coaches, uh, presented Restorative Practices at Work at the Leading by Learning IASB, IASA, IASBO Joint Annual Conference on Saturday, November eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, in Chicago, Illinois. Uh, it was a large room that was mostly full, and, uh, had a number of excellent questions and a lot of engagement. Uh, I was very impressed and very, um, honored to be, uh, to be seeing our, uh, staff present at, uh, such a, um, important conference and an important topic. Just two more things. One is, uh, the, you may have seen this on social media. It also got a little bit of press in the News Gazette and on, um, WCIA. On Monday, November twentieth, the Champaign-Urbana Schools Foundation Prize Patrol, I think that they are trying to, um, trademark that term, uh, delivered oversized checks totaling more than thirty-seven thousand dollars to ninety-three teachers in Unit Four and District One-Sixteen schools. The grant awards, which support sixty-six new projects benefiting fifteen thousand students, are part of the Champaign-Urbana Schools Foundation's ongoing efforts to foster creativity and elevate excellence in our local public schools. Two projects bring teachers and students together across the two districts. These are called the Large Collaborative Grants. They can be up to five thousand dollars. One is a proposal titled "The Mathematics Escape Room," which promotes critical and logical thinking skills in a fun and unconventional way. Students work together to solve a series of puzzles and unlock boxes using clues, hints, hints and strategies in a timed environment. Math teachers from Central Centennial and Urbana High School will work together to bring an escape room into their classrooms as an interactive way for students to learn and review material. The second cross-district pro- proposal titled "Inter-City Strings in Concert with Friends" increases the number of stringed instruments in Champaign-Urbana schools, so every student who wishes to learn stringed instruments will have the opportunity to join a strings class. Beth McDonald at Booker T. Washington Elementary School and Tamara Gingold at Urbana High School are the two leads, and they will collaborate with other strings teachers across the districts, as well as with the Community Center for the Arts, to plan a high school music composition, competition, excuse me, a high school music composition competition and concert, uh, for later this school year. And there can be a complete list of funded projects can be found at the Champaign-Urbana Schools Foundation website, cuschoolsfoundation.org/grant-announcements. Finally, I'd just like to say, uh, that this is the last day before our Thanksgiving break. Um, I have a great deal to be thankful for, and I'm very thankful to, uh, my board members, many of whom attended the, uh, Joint Annual Conference with a number of our administrators, uh, this past weekend. Um, I'm also thankful for this community, which supports public education in a variety of ways. Um, I'm thankful to our teachers and administrators who have been very patient and understanding as we've gone through a fairly trying period with technology over the last few weeks. Um, and I'm especially thankful for my team, uh, without whom I don't think we would be, um, doing, um, nearly as well as we are. I have an amazing team that, uh, sits around this table. Um, I'm very honored to work with them. I'm very proud of them, and, uh, I'd just like to thank them as well. I wish everyone a peaceful, relaxing, and safe Thanksgiving weekend. I would like to remind people that Urbana High School's, uh, Student Senate's Thanksgiving Dinner is open and free, um, on Thursday, starting at five PM, and going till roughly seven PM. And, um, if you need more information about that, our website is back up, and you can, um, find information on our district website, or in the News Gazette, which I believe had a, uh, article about it today. So have a wonderful Thanksgiving weekend, everyone.
Board reports.
I just had a quick thing. Uh, the delegate assembly, there was three hundred and sixty-seven delegates there in Chicago, and there were some resolutions on the floor, but, um, all of them, we approved according to the standards that the, uh, State Board had recommended. So, also, uh, John, I was gonna tell you, um, I'm not sure Emma, the swimmer, I forgot her last name.
Roger.
Uh, yeah, she is really making a name for herself and Urbana High School in her accomplishments.
She goes to uni.
She's at uni.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Gabby, her sister was Urbana High School.
All right. I apologize, but she is doing very well. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. Urbana family.
I just, uh, thank the hundreds of people who showed up on November twelfth for the Mile Pines in support of the CU Schools Foundation. It was a chilly day, but, uh, they're very, yes, sped up people's paces to get out of the cold weather, but, um, it was, it was great to see such a celebration of public education, um, in that event. So thanks to everybody, and the vendors who supported that event.
And since you opened that door, I, I do need to apologize. I've been, uh, a little lax in crunching my numbers for that. As many of you know, I put out a couple challenges. Uh, the one thing I will say that I do have complete verification on, uh, is that one person in this room, uh, beat me by over thirty seconds in the mile race. Um, and, uh, I will say that I held with him for the first four hundred meters, and then I could not see him at the half-mile mark. Um, and that is, uh, a board member, Paul Pulaski, who, uh, I, I believe you were under seven minutes. So, I'm very impressed, and, um, I will, uh, I will be posting something over the Thanksgiving weekend, um, about, about the, uh, different challenges, and, um, I will probably be writing a large check myself to the Champaign-Urbana Schools Foundation based on those challenges. So, thank you for pointing that out, Paul, and congratulations.
No one wants to talk about Adam's family? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I went Friday night, and it was packed. I really didn't know I was gonna get a seat, but, um, there were a lot of high school kids there. I thought they did a great job. I mean, you know, the, the music, there was a lot of, it just, that was a big one to pull off, I thought, because of the, the makeups, the makeup and the costumes. I thought that, that the makeup was fantastic. I just, I really enjoyed myself. How about you?
Loved it. So, um, also wanted to, uh, I'll do my report, and, uh, I noticed that two members of our debate team have been invited to compete at Nationals in, uh, Washington, DC, so, uh, they're making, uh-
Oh, that is great.
They're making significant, uh, progress on the, the team is. So I just wanted to bring that to people's attention. You may have missed that. Anyone else? Any other board reports tonight? Ruth Ann?
Just wanted to, uh, thank and be thankful that I went to, uh, the conference in Chicago this past weekend. I hit all of the school safety things that I possibly could get under my belt, and I was totally blown away by, uh, one of the speakers, and I don't mean to end this on a down note, who has studied for decades violence that comes into our schools, that came to our shores, basically from overseas, starting decades ago. And he has all the facts and the figures, and for over an hour, he was just non-stop with his overhead projector and all of his facts and figures on two great big Post-it things, and it was fantastic. Um, and that was retired, uh, Lieutenant Colonel Army, Lieutenant Colonel Dave Grossman, and he has some very interesting books out. There's at least five of them. He, uh, autographed and gave free books to the first one hundred and fifty people at the booth, and I have one. It's called, and it sounds sad, Assassination Generation. And he, uh, goes out to, he can do schools, he can do trainings with, uh, the military and also with law enforcement, on what he has projected from decades ago, and the increase that we have seen most recently. He was predicting it, and it's coming true, and it's not going away. So I want us to be very, very into looking at every little thing we can possibly do for our buildings, for our staff, for parents coming and going, our students, to protect everyone all the time, and let our community know on a regular basis what we are doing. We cannot let our safety plan out to the public for the wrong people to get their hands on, but we, as a community, need to encourage our school district to stay up on any type of new technology that comes along, that will protect our schools and our students. And I think he would be a wonderful guest speaker. He would scare the bejibies out of you, 'cause it's, it was, it's not a real pleasant workshop to sit through, because it's so truthful, and it's scary. But we need to also do the right things and be happy that we do what we do to protect everyone in our buildings.
Okay. Other board reports. Motion to adjourn would be in order. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. We're adjourned.